The pendulum swung in our favor this time. Expenditures out of the Walker Fund were $404.24, $400 for the Bookhead Event, and $4.24 for the Novi Newbies. When you compare revenues and expenditures for the month of February, they increased by 4,041.61, or up 17.19 percent. For a year-to-date balance, 27,552. Looking at the balance sheet, cash in the fund increased by 3,116.1. The small account receivable we had, the due from the general fund of $45 was cleared up, and accounts payable decreased by 975. Thus unrestricted current fund balance increased during the month, 4,041.61, or up 17.19 percent. Total Walker assets were 1,0562.973, $400 in liabilities, leaving fund balance restricted 90,251, and unrestricted 1,472.321.74. When you combine the library investments, and there's a separate report for that, the library fund, 268, at the end of February, total fund balance, 3,146.379. The Walker Fund, 1,0562.973, or a combined library investments, 4,709.352. During the month of February, library fund investments were decreased by 183,323, or a negative 5.51 percent, while the Walker Fund went up slightly, 3,116.1. When we combine the balance sheets of both funds, we show a total combined fund balance of 4,582.846.21. And again, if you're questioning, how come the numbers are different? The investment funds are the cash funds. The fund balances off the statement includes the receivables and payables and a few minor things here. So the 4,582.846 reflects a net decrease in the month of 165,961.84, down 3.5 percent from the prior month. The separate sheet that you have, one that looks like this, combining the two funds, shows that the market value of the Fund 268-
It's page 38 in your packet.
Page 38, okay, thank you. Is down, as I mentioned earlier, 183,323. The Walker Fund is up 3,111, or on a combined basis, the 4,709.351.74 is down 180,212 since the prior month. With respect to, these are the details, so I already gave you that. We did get the Library Cafe. That was given to me late here, I'm sorry. For the month of February, 4/11/24 was collected. So that's our look back. Do you want me to keep going into item E, or do you want to have a chance to discuss February?
Uh, for a second, anybody have any questions on February? I have, well, I think I have a question on February, but it also relates to item F, which is the library report from the City of Novi, which, I don't remember normally getting this document. Is this document we're just getting because of budget time, or is this something that we're going to get, you know, at some irregular intervals? It's just that it's also, you know, end of February, 2013.
Correct. It's just for budget time, and it was to validate the new property tax numbers that were coming in, so that I could show you that those were firm numbers from the city that we would be moving forward with, which is part of your conversation for the new budget approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I-
I mean, they are through February, but-
And I guess for me to point out, and I know that Julie and I have had this discussion before, we have sort of two documents-
Yes.
-that both are ending February 28, 2013, but they have different numbers on them.
Yes.
So anyway, I mean, and so I wanted to bring that up-
And they're also not in the same order, and they're not-
And it was a little confusing for me, and I do understand why they're there, but it's just a little confusing.
I actually put it in just so that, because I had sent an email to confirm, as of last Friday, when I received it, that we were getting a new, the projected activity for 12/13, that that was a good number to be sharing with all of you.
And I guess as I look at it, it's, although still dated, you know, as of February 28, 2013, the numbers are different, but it really helps to validate our proposed budget going forward.
Correct, yes.
That was my question, comment. Go ahead.
You jumped ahead of me, but that's my-
Well, I jumped ahead of you, because they're sort of like their February numbers.
Yes.
Their February numbers.
So hearing no questions or comments regarding February activity, let's move to item E. And Julie, do you want me to report?
Go right ahead, sure, absolutely, yes.
Well then, let me point out, you have on pages 43 and 44, the library-prepared budgetary information supplemented, as the President has noted on pages 45 to 47, by report provided by the city. And they're similar, but they're not identical. So with respect, if you look at page 43, there are five columns to the budget worksheet. The 2012-2013, the first column is the budget that we referred to earlier. The second column is an extrapolation, taking the information for the eight months, year-to-date through February, and projecting through the end of the fiscal year. And I got a question I got to bring out here.
Yes.
Why was account 403, property tax revenues, increased by $60,000 when we've had reductions in the first eight months?
Right.
This is a surprise to me, to see a big jump.
Which was for me as well, when I received the information on Friday. That's why I provided you with the city's numbers, because they're telling me that we can project, that we can, we know for sure through the city and based on the report they provided, that that property tax revenue is going to come in at 2,279. So I wanted-
Okay, I mean, that's a significant change.
Sure it is.
Okay? Here, like I said, here we've been reporting all along, we start with the July assessment, and then as things progress, and the receivable changes, and tribunal claims get worked out, what gets flushed through our financials, our reductions, and now all of a sudden, there's a potential $60,000 windfall that we hadn't anticipated here.
Correct.
So I hope it comes to fruition, in which case, Willie, it certainly makes that stipend arrangement much more balanced.
I was happy to see those numbers too, which is why I asked for the, I asked, you know, the Finance Department, could I share this information, so that you saw that what they were sending me was a validation of that number for me to put in the budget for that year-end? When you're, because you're going to approve this, I hope, this evening, and then you'd approve with that number.
Okay. The implications, as I see them, if you look at page, the bottom of page 44, we had authorized going into this fiscal year, potentially tapping the reserves for 305,000.
Correct.
Okay? We then, our best guestimates, when we met earlier in February, were prepared to draw 195,000.
Correct.
So we had the wherewithal to cover the stipend allocation, and now you're suggesting that our target should be only 135,000-
That is correct.
...being borrowed. And that includes paying out the 50,000.
That is correct.
Okay. That's all great news if it happens.
Yep, yes.
We will be watching.
I will be too, and I was excited to see those as well.
Okay. So, as a result of the two budget sessions that we had, and now with additional information provided by the city, because they added another $10,000 to the projected property tax revenues for next year, the middle column in green, the 2013-2014 budget-
Correct.
-they boosted it by 10 grand from where we started. So total revenues are expected to be just under 2.5 million, at 2,493,600. You did factor in the suggestion for increasing wages-
Correct.
-by 1.5 percent, so it's baked into the expenditure number under Personnel Services.
Yes, both permanent and the temporary.
And the 1,913,300 is up 5,300 from the last draft that we had from the last budget session. Under the Supplies and Materials, it's the same number, 578,900, which also included boosting, or bolstering the allocation for materials by 50,000.
Correct.
But that's already there. And under Services and Charges, I see that programming was increased by six grand.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
For a total of 438,700. I also asked, just so we can see, the capitalized outlays for the year are still going to show as being part of the operating budget for next year, but I thought it's significant to show as separate line items. So you see two categories, one for technology of 35,000, one for furniture and fixtures, 8,800, or total capital outlay, 43,800. When you combine all the categories together, we look to spend 2,974,700, leaving a potential shortfall of 481,100. And that's what's being recommended by the Board for consideration.
Correct.
Now, in addition, you have two more columns where we're doing a second and a third look forward. These aren't official and binding, but they're just our best guest estimate. You'll notice back on page 43, the total revenues are anticipated to climb, going from 2,493 next year to 2,570 the following year, and up to 2,642,800 the third year. The expenditures are going to be fairly close, but there's two major capital improvement outlays projected in years two and three, 73,600 each year. So therefore, the potential reserve draw, 471,500 in two years, and 439,100 in three years. Or roughly 1.3 million over the three-year period. And by that time, we're hoping things will have healed and recovered, and we will no longer have to do that.
It'd be great to see them come back at 60,000 or so more, like we saw on Friday.
So that's the report being presented? If anybody would like to discuss the report before we make a motion to move forward?
I'd like to make a comment. I guess, first of all, I want to thank the Board, and the staff, and Julie, for meeting on two Saturday mornings in terms of working out most of these issues on the budget. You know, we all have little different ideas, but I think we kind of came together, and we're very close on these numbers. And Julie heard all of our different discussions, and somehow created a way to make them become uniform, and they're reflected here. With really, the only difference being, I think we've seen these before, with the only difference being, at what I consider the very last moment, the city indicated that we were going to get an extra $60,000 in revenue for the current year-
Correct.
-and an extra $10,000 in revenue for next year.
Correct.
Sixty plus ten?
Well, sixty for 2012, 2013, and they upped the revenue $10,000 in 2013, 2014. Now, I must say, I look at these numbers, and just in the property tax revenue line, if they've increased the revenue for 2012, 2013, for a total of 2,079-
Right.
-I, I'm almost disappointed that they added only 10,000 in 2013, 2014, because I just don't think that's consistent.
Right.
And I also think it-
It's a negative 25,000.
It creates the appearance-
Right.
-we're going to generate less money next year.
Correct. I agree with you.
Now, I mean, it's positive in the sense that it's more money than we anticipated-
From the budget.
-and it's probably underestimated.
Well, and then you even look at our projected numbers, and they're way down.
And so, if you look at this kind of across the board, this year, next year, and the next two years, it creates kind of a funny curve-
Right.
-but I guess I am passing this all off as, I really think our anticipated revenue for next year will be much greater than what we're showing here.
That's what I know, yes.
And so, but those are really, in my opinion, the differences in what this Board sat through in two Saturdays, and coming up with this budget, and really kind of the last little twist tonight.
Yes.
But I want to give, I want to thank the Board, I want to thank Julie, and I want to thank the staff for taking two Saturdays out of your schedule to get to this point, where I think we're at a good point.
We are. I do, I agree with you very much, so. And it is, it's great to see these numbers changing. My comment back was, I wish we could have had these numbers a little earlier, based on when we meet and our conversations, but I know, timing, that's just the way it is. But I'm happy to see them now, before we make that approval. At least we're moving forward with knowing that that potential 60,000 is there, and then there's an additional 10 for the next year, to the good.
Good. Trustee Margolis. I failed to make a significant observation here, that we're acutely aware of, but I don't think our constituency is, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't point out. Part of the reason that we're allowing total expenditures to increase is because we're increasing the hours of service going forward, that the library will be open on the weekends. And that's baked into the numbers.
It is, correct. And that's, that's, when you're approving that this evening, that's a huge thing that will be, you know, as this gets approved this evening, that's a great thing to be sharing to our community, starting tomorrow.
Well, I think the proposed budget reflects two goals that we, as a Board, have had, responses that we've received from the community, or responding to comments we've received from the community, in particular, to increase the hours of operational library, and also to dedicate more resources towards electronic devices in the library, that this budget certainly advances those goals in a very, very significant way.
You are correct, and you're ahead of the game when it comes to your strategic plans, starting in July.
Any other comments on the proposed budget for next year? I would entertain a motion to adopt our proposed, the proposed budget for 2013, 2014 is set forth in our materials.
Motion to approve? Isn't that out of order, though? If we approve the agenda for matters for Board action, shouldn't wait till that?
I don't think it has to. I mean, you, I think you're fine.
I think we've identified what is going to be a Board action-
We leave them there just so we don't forget them.
-there, but I think we can take it as it comes up.
I think you can too, absolutely.
Yeah. The motion to approve the 2013-2014 budget for the Novi Public Library has been moved and seconded. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The budget for 2013-2014 has been approved and adopted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Always a momentous moment.
It is. We now have our next plan. The next plan is in place, starting for July. That's great, thank you very much. Okay.
Do you have anything else in your report, or was that the end?
That's it. I think I occupied plenty of your time.
Moving on, item number 10 then, Director's Report.
Okay.
Back to you, Julie.
Back, starting on page 48, obviously the budget we have taken care of. Here's an update on our fundraising. Things are going very well. We've received so far, $3,800 in sponsorship for the event. Special thanks to Walmart, 12 Oaks, Novi Town Center, Global Office Solutions, and Chasing Photos. Those are the companies that have offered sponsorship to date. The committee is working very hard to gather donations from our Novi businesses at this time. This year's event will benefit the library's fiction and electronic book collections. So any monies that we raise from the event will go for those for the 2013-14 year, and possibly even longer. Attached, which is actually on page 49, is, it's a smaller version, but it is of the flyer that is going to, not flyer, but postcard, that's going to be going out effective Friday. We'll be sending that out to our donor, our specific donors, that's close to 600, that will receive an invitation. Basically, the postcard is mailed directly to these particular donors. Then we will also put together posters, and we've started putting out on website and all of our various ways of promoting the event. Tickets are already going, have been on sale, and people are calling and purchasing, so we're moving ahead with that as well. The entertainment for the evening will be the Sundowners Duo, so it's a Western-type theme for the event, and so it'll be a musical group that has been firmed up. We've also received an acceptance from Mayor Bob Gatt to be our emcee for the evening, so he will be helping us with the live auction portion of the event, and the raffle as well. So all the details are coming into place. In fact, in front of President Stirring this evening, we have information about the, we have to get a resolution for our liquor license to put that forth to the state of Michigan, and so you'll see that in Matters for Board Action as well, this evening, for us to go forward with that. The Cafe Subcommittee, which is Trustee Manna and Trustee Chekai, I have forwarded the cafe lease that is currently being, being used and is to date, and looking for some edits and suggestions, so that we can move forward with a new three-year lease with our cafe tenants, and I'm confident that we'll be bringing that back to you for approval in April. The library card requirement, I just wanted to give you an update as to what's been going on, and what we've been, how we've been communicating that to the public, so there's a, in that large paragraph there, there's a number of ways that we've been sharing that the library card, that patrons' library cards will be required beginning September 1st at the library. We had a very nice Novi News article, which is in your packet, that was both electronic Novi News and in the paper back on the 7th of March. So along with also our regular communication and notification on our, on our website, and also when you're checking out on self-checkout, as well as other, other areas of the library. We have it in Engage, which will come out for summer, and we also have been putting it in monthly into our e-newsletter, so we continue to share that information with the patrons.
Have you gotten any significant advance pushback?
I have not, at this point. Just a lot of reminders. In fact, I was on the welcome desk this week, because I try to be on there to see patrons, and my, my staff is doing a wonderful job, just, you know, very diligently sharing that if someone's coming in and they don't have their card in hand with them, just reminding them that in September, and it was a really nice interaction that I caught, because the patron said, oh yes, I, I've already been reminded of that, so they know, and they're going to get those reminders for the next few months. We want to make sure that they're, they're really ready for this when that change happens. I also am bringing to you some changes with the Family and Medical Leave Act policy. I did bring this to Trustee Kilgore to look over, very small, and we can talk about that as we get to the Board, the Matters for Board Action. If you move forward to page 56, I made a note under Mary Ellen's report that we did have the technology plan completed, so you do have that in your packet. Just please note that the date is incorrect. It should be July 2013 to June 2016. That was, that was a typo on my, on my part. She did include, and I'm sorry that it did not make the packet, just some updates for you on what's been happening in terms of building operations. I do want to point out just one thing, and that's because it was brought up in conversation at the February Board Meeting. We did have a couple of our staff attend a Guns in the Library webinar, which was made available to us just this week, so we keep making ourselves aware of and keeping up on that legislation. I'm waiting for a report to be coming back, which I should have, and I'd be happy to share that information with you as well, just since I know that that was a topic that we were, that we were talking about, and it was of interest. So the technology plan starts on page 57. That is a good seven pages of information for you. I think it's helpful for you to have that, because it does then describe what type of system and how we run things in the library, so this is good information for you if people ask. I know that some of you are interested in those details, so that is available to you. And then on page, this is the insert, because as you know, there were some statistics not provided to you in the packet, but you did receive another sheet, so I just want to highlight that we did have a very good month in terms of checkout. We issued 303 cards in the month of February. 61,916 items were checked out during the month. 3,764 were borrowed from other libraries, and 4,724 of our items were loaned to other libraries. We also, let's see, and then on page, on the, on the back side of that, I wanted to provide you two, two numbers that were not part of the initial packet, and that being the 61,916 for circulation numbers checked out, but our self-checkout percentage is at 56.21 percent. We're averaging 58 percent overall so far, since the beginning of the fiscal, so we're doing very well. As I, as I shared with you, our target's always been around the 50 percent mark, and we've been doing higher than that. Then we also had open our daily average of people to point, and for February, we had 31,795 people visit the building. We're averaging about 1,138 people monthly that come in, so we're doing well there. And then also, if you look at some additional information in terms of page 66, at some technology sessions, and how we're doing in terms of the type of technology programming that we're offering to the community. Total classes to date, 112 technology classes, and 183 participants. Some of those classes, I just want to point out to you, they are one-on-ones, so we're providing that one-on-one service. When someone, they contact us, they might have a new reader, they're not familiar with it, and we provide some one-on-one service to get them using it, and maybe even download material for the first time. So that's why those numbers might not seem as high when you compare to the sessions, but the sessions can be one-on-ones. And then computer logins, information as well, and that is all I have, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Two questions.
Yes.
First, I want to mention that I was at the Greta, and you have that for the umbrellas, another thing-
Yes.
-it in there. I saw so many people coming, and they really appreciate that. It's a small thing, but it is a touch.
We added the plastic bags, so that when people walk into the building for the, that would be our facilities department that was on that, so I have to give them credit.
Facility is doing very good. Secondly, about these tickets.
Yes.
Now, people are calling me, and it's very hard to send them the ticket, so I'm telling them, I am putting their names-
Great.
-but they can come at the counter, and so that the list will be there-
That would be fine.
-so they can pay, and then get the ticket there.
That would be fine. If you can just let, if you can keep Marcia into the loop as to the people that you're sending, so she has them on the list, that's all we need.
Yeah, is it, when she wants to know, because people are still calling.
You can, well, you, if you've firmed up and you have yeses, send her those names, so that we can add them to our list.
Yeah, this is on April 26.
26.
I will give it by 15th of April.
Sure, yeah, that'll be fine.
Yeah, I will give that list to you.
Okay. Great, thank you, and I appreciate you inviting people to the event.
Thank you.
Julie, quick question on the training. Could you remind me again what impromptu is? I recall hearing that, but I can't remember.
Impromptu is when a patron doesn't call and like set up an appointment, but drops into the library, and if we've got the staff available, we will provide an impromptu training.
I was wondering why the numbers were so high for them.
Sure.
Okay. It wasn't like something, thinking, I don't, not sure of any particular software package.
No. That's our, that's, that's us. It's the best service you can get.
Yeah, I got you, thank you.
Anything else that I can, I can answer, or give information to?
Whether we do it now for the calendar, or just as part of your Director's Report, but you'd like to put in a plug to remind our, our audience that the Battle of the Books is this-
Yes, it is.
-Saturday at 1:00.
This Saturday at 1:00, a great event. We've been hosting it for over 12 years now. It's fifth and sixth graders that battle each other with a number of books that they've read all winter, and they're questioned about details of the books that they've been reading. They form teams, they answer these questions in teams.
It's going to be here, right?
It is. It's here at the Civic Center, because if you can believe it, our large meeting room can't hold such a large group, so the city is always gracious to give us the space. And I'd love to know, before you leave this evening, if you are planning to attend, just so I can- attend, just so I can give a heads up to people in terms of introductions at the event on Saturday. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions for our director? I'm going to move on to Levin, Friends of the Novi Library.
They do not have a report this evening because they did not meet in February.
Okay. Moving on to item number 12, which is the Student Representatives Report.
Okay. In February, we had a tab meeting, but the attendance was low because of the snow day. But during that meeting, we talked about the summer reading and the programs for the fall, and then we also had our first group of teen volunteers attend the volunteer session, and they helped the librarian with DVD sorting.
Okay, then also, as part of our Teen Space project, one of our partners, the Novi Parks and Rec Department, hosted a Teen Space open house last month on the 12th, and we had like a really large attendance, and that included pictures in our report of all the activities that we had. And in terms of program, we have a lot of strong program, or attendance in our programs. And then, looking ahead, we do have the Coloring Pages Dresser program tomorrow, tomorrow evening at, oh, tomorrow afternoon at 3:00, and then we have the ACT SAT test prep next Wednesday, and then Animanga Club next month. And that's about it. Have a nice spring.
Question. How is the, I'm kind of curious on the whole ACT SAT test prep. How is that going to set up? Are you bringing somebody in? Are you guys working together on that, or?
I believe they have a facilitator that comes in.
Okay. Well, very nice.
We usually bring in someone who can give direction.
Do you have questions or comments? Student Representative Report. Thank you. Historical Commission Report, item 13.
Yes, there are two. The first in front of you is the February 27th meeting, which is a draft, so those are just notes. They have not been approved. And then, the January 23rd, those are approved minutes. They're doing a great job, and what I want to point out to all of you this evening is a project they're working on. I had passed along to you a small frame set, which has some etchings on it. Did you all have a chance just to look at it? Okay. Those were low resolution, but the Historical Commission is working on a project in the local history room. There are seven glass panels in our local history room when you go in, that you can't actually see into the lobby, but they overlook into the lobby area, and they are looking, working currently with a gentleman who can etch historical photos into those glass panes. The, there are seven panes. They've identified the seven photos that will go into each of them, the first being, first being the Wild Lake Amusement Park, second is the Basset Farm from 1850, third is the Methodist Church, the fourth is the Train Depot. These are all historical photos that the Historical Commission has had on file and has record of. The Novi Town Hall from 1876, that rendering, and then the last is the City of Novi logo with the Historical Commission's tagline underneath. So, they're currently working with a gentleman by the name of Ryan Trainer. He actually did the glass etching that's right here in the council chambers, has done very nice work. What you're seeing is just, you know, just an example of his work, but again, in low resolution. We do have high-resolution photos, and when we met with Ryan this week, he was confident that the work could be done, and that the photos that were provided to him in high resolution were very good photos to use, based on what was chosen. So, I'm just bringing information to you. The cost of these etchings will be taken care of through the Historical Commission out of their budget. This is something that they want to do in order to give back to the community. I love the fact that it's going to be in the local history room. It's a very nice tie. When we move forward, the work will probably begin, at least from the conversations I've been having, probably in April sometime, April and May. It will take a while. We will have to shut down our local history room during that time, just because of the type of work it is. It's very dirty. We'll probably have to remove the materials and the equipment that's in the room so that the work can be done. But then, we'll be looking for an unveiling of the room and that artwork probably in midsummer. This information's been shared with the city managers, just so they're kept up to date, as well as the Parks and Rec Department, because they also work with some historical information as well, and projects in the community, and just wanted you to be aware of what we have coming. Another unique piece of artwork, or many pieces of artwork, that will be coming to the building. Okay?
Fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move on to the committee reports, but before I let Julie report on the standing committee reports, I'm going to remind this board that at the end of the standing committee reports, I'm going to seek a volunteer or volunteers to be on the ad-hoc committee for nominating officers for next year. So, for a few minutes, you get to think about that if you're willing to volunteer for that, and I'll let Julie report on the standing committees right now.
I actually have no reports in terms of standing committees at this time. Everything seems to be working well, and we haven't had any reasons to meet in terms of committees. The small ad-hoc committee of the CAFE, we have started that process and have shared information, so nothing else at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you didn't get as much notice as I thought you would get. We need a committee of two or three people who would be willing to talk to board members, determine what board members have been in their positions for two years, and so they're really not eligible for that position next year, but looking for two or possibly three members who would be on an ad-hoc committee to serve for nominating officers for next year. Ramesh? Anybody else? Larry? I'm going to nominate Larry Kilgore and Ramesh Verma to the ad-hoc committee to come up with a slate for officers for next year, and-
Officer for all, or only one position?
For all the, for the officer, for each officer.
President, secretary, treasurer.
Vice president.
Vice president. Four positions, four officers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
When they are due for that?
That would be for next meeting.
Correct. For the April meeting.
For the April meeting.
April 17.
So, April 17, so we had to work it out before that.
Correct.
You and Mr. Kilgore?
Okay.
You are nominated. And selected and chosen to be that committee.
One thing I do want to bring up, and this would be for the HR committee, just to be aware, since I'm giving you a heads up with it being April now, our next board meeting, just to be thinking about director's evaluation and stuff, and I know that takes some time for you, so if you want to start planning, if you need anything from me, please let me know. I'd be happy to provide anything. Okay?
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, which is another opportunity for the public to make comment, ask questions in regard to any library activities. This is your chance to approach the podium and make any public comments you'd like to make. I see nobody in the audience rushing up to the podium, so we're going to move on from the public comment and deal with the Matters for Board Action, which we've not already addressed. We have addressed item number A already, and in terms of approving the 2013, 2014 budget, we have before us a resolution for the library board to obtain a one-time liquor license for the event on April 23, 2013. That's on page 48.
That'd be April 26, right?
April 26.
Yes.
I think I misspoke. It's on, it's, the resolution itself is on page 48 in our handout. And that resolution would be that the application from the Novi Public Library for a special license to serve alcohol on April 26, 2012.
That should be 2013.
Yeah, that should be 2013.
Yes. I'm just looking at that.
To be located at 45255 West Ten Mile Road, Novi, Michigan, 48375. Be considered for approval. Any discussion? It's been moved?
Seconded.
It's been seconded?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Clarification. I know we refer to it as a one-time liquor license. Is it just a single use as opposed to one time?
It is. Yes, it's a single, it's a single use. We actually, we take their language that they give us from the state of Michigan, but it is only for April 26 for a one use.
One time just suggests this is the only, we're just doing this one time.
Oh, I see what you mean.
And we're not, we're doing it repeatedly for special events, but it's a one-day event, right?
It is.
But this is, the Liquor Control Commission refers to it as a one time?
Correct. This is, yes, this is their language.
Julie, we've done this now for two years.
We have.
This would be the third year. I, you know, and I was in attendance for the last two Bookett events. They went great. We didn't have any problems, and I would definitely be supporting this motion today.
We also, just for clarification, we work with a bartender. We must have a bartending license, so we have to provide that as well at the event, so it's someone who has that background, that experience, when it comes to soliciting and giving out alcohol.
Any further discussion? Been moved, been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Next item for Matters for Board Action is a revision to the Family and Medical Leave Act that starts on page 49 in our handouts.
We're not changing the FMLA. We're just changing our policy as it relates to the FMLA.
Correct.
That is correct. But, and as I read it, the only change is refers to subsequently adopted amendments?
You are correct.
Or that's the only thing I could tell in my outline here.
You are correct, trustee Stirring.
We've been, the three lawyers on the board have been outlawyered by our staff and executive director. It is very common in legal documents, when you're referring to a statute, to add the reference, as it may be amended from time to time. Julie has, of course, we have a reference to the Family and Medical Leave Act in the policy itself, and Julie has suggested that we add such a clause to our policy.
These do get looked over regularly anyways for any changes that would be pertinent to the library board and employees, but this is just in regard to the changes that have been made federally in March of 2013.
So, our policy would automatically capture any changes-
It would.
To the act, to what happened from here on forward.
I know that the federal government has a unique way of identifying its acts, but is it really the National Defense Authorization Act of 2008?
That's, I didn't change any language, so. Yes, to answer your question.
Okay.
That is verbatim.
Probably included waterboarding.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't think, did we have a motion?
No.
No. Okay. So, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Unanimously adopted. I'm ready to entertain a motion to adjourn, unless there's anything else that anybody wants to present to the board.
So moved?
Been moved and-
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.